Welcome to the May 11th Troy City Council meeting. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, please turn it off. It affects our equipment and if you have to make a call, please go out into the hall. This evening, we are pleased to have with us Pastor Paul Munson from the St. Augustine Lutheran Church, who will give us the invocation and then that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise, Pastor.
We bow our head in a word of prayer. Dear Lord Heavenly Father, in the Lord's Prayer, you have taught us to pray and give us to stay our daily bread. We know daily bread has everything to do with our daily needs of our bodies. We know, dear Lord, our country is going through hard times these days with unemployment being particularly high in our state. So we pray, Lord, that you would give our President, our Governor, our Mayor, and all the government leaders in our land the wisdom they need to produce jobs so that people might be able to earn their daily bread. Your Son also gives us the Word that He has come to give life and give it to the full. So I pray, Lord, that we be a culture that celebrates life, protects life. And so we pray, Lord, for our senior citizens. We pray, Lord, for those who are weak and defenseless, the mentally ill, the handicapped. We pray, Lord, for the unborn. I also lift up the City Council tonight that you give them wisdom in all of their decisions, that even though these council members may not always see eye to eye, they would disagree with one another respectfully and peacefully. So in Jesus' name, bless this meeting with wisdom and peace. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Munson. Our best to you and your family. May we have the roll call, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling.
Here.
Councilwoman Beltramey.
Brumfield.
Here.
Eisenbacher.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
Howellak.
Here.
Kerwin.
Here.
Quorum present. We begin this evening with a presentation and so I will step down to the front to provide that on behalf of the council. And with me, we have Teresa Wensick, who is here to receive this on behalf of the Oakland County
Community Mental Health Authority.
Health Authority, yes. This is a proclamation that Mental Health Month, which is May of 2009, where as one in four of all Americans will experience a mental health disorder that requires treatment at some point in their lives. And whereas stigma and stereotypes associated with mental illness can keep those living with such an illness from seeking treatment that could improve their quality of life and help them manage the illness effectively. Whereas mental illness is biologically based brain disorders, they cannot be overcome through willpower and are not related to a person's character or intelligence. And whereas mental health is critical for our well-being and vitality as well as that of our families, communities, and businesses. Whereas the World Health Organization has found that mental illness ranks first in terms of causing disability in the United States and the most prevalent health problem in America today. And whereas one in 10 children has a serious mental health disorder and if untreated, can lead to school failure, physical illness, substance abuse, and even suicide. And whereas mental illnesses are common to all countries and cause immense suffering, people with these disorders are often subjected to social isolation, poor quality of life, and increased mortality. So now therefore be it resolved, the Troy City Council does hereby proclaim May 2009 as Mental Health Month in the city of Troy, Michigan. And be it further resolved, the City Council calls upon all citizens, community agencies, organizations, and businesses in Troy to encourage all citizens in Troy to recommit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness. And this is signed by myself and all members of council. Presented this 11th day of May 2009. Would you like to say a few words?
No, but thank you very much. Oakland County Community Mental Health wishes to acknowledge and appreciate the city of Troy for partnering with us in educating our community and raising awareness about the importance of mental health. The stigma that comes with having a mental illness is a barrier we must break so that individuals can more readily seek treatment and recovery when they encounter this terrible disease. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. Good luck to you. Now this evening, we have no carryover items. And our public hearing this evening is the adoption of our 2009-2010 annual budget. And so at this point, I will call on Mr. Zurley and Mr. Lamorato for information and also to alert council and members of the audience that we have an amendment to the resolution that is in the agenda. Mr. Zurley?
That's correct. Mr. Lamorato had prepared this excellent, soon to be award-winning document. And I'd like to have the Assistant Manager of Finance and Administration re-explain the resolution that we are going to advance to you for consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Lamorato?
Yes, the mayor and City Council, you have before you the resolution for the 2009-10 budget. Does incorporate the few changes that were discussed at our budget study sessions, some language changes to our budget policies, and then also one amendment for funding of local roads up to $3 million. That funding, the $637,000 came from the Civic Center Site Improvement Reserve Fund, which still stands over $1 million for that project. We maintain the same tax rate, 9.28 mils. And if there are any further questions, glad to answer.
We had our two regular sessions of budget study where we received a lot of information, asked a lot of questions, did make some changes. And also too, the written document reflects all the meetings that we had last year with the outcomes-based budgeting process where we had input, ran things. And this document is also very readable because it encompasses not only the figures that we allocate funds, but it also gives a great deal of information so that readers in the community or outside the community want to know about our community, find out a great deal of information in the budget. It's also on our website for those of you that wish to see more of the details. Were there further questions from council at this point on the budget?
Mayor?
Mayor Protam Howellak.
I'm curious about this memo from May 8th with the additional paragraph. If somebody could explain the need and intent of that.
Yes, that came about when the question was asked of the impact on the vote of last November and the allocation of funds from the capital to and Mrs. Blum checked into it. Also, they discussed this as to the impact. Mrs. Blum?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we in fact did, after the meeting when Councilwoman Beltramey had some questions about the effect of the last charter amendment proposal, we did do some research on it. We did, I actually had outside council briefly look at it. And the revision to this language just clarifies that it is the rates that were in effect as of the date that the charter amendment was passed. It's just clarifying what is in the charter proposal and making sure that there's not the downward spiraling that was a concern.
I guess my question would be twofold. One, is what is your office's interpretation of the charter amendment in the case of a downer revision to the general operating fund or capital fund millage as we're doing here? And the second part of that is how does this paragraph change that interpretation?
I'm going to answer your first question first, if that's okay. It does not change the interpretation. The interpretation that we in this administration have had is that the 2008 operating and capital millage is the only one that is impacted by that charter amendment. And the 2008 rate sets the basis for that.
So I guess, if I may, just to clarify my second point, question rather. What is the need for this paragraph then?
Mayor, it's just a clarification. It sets forth what is council's understanding of this, which would echo what City Administration's interpretation is.
And Mrs. Blum, the insertion of this paragraph would come before the last, be it finally resolved? Is that where it would be inserted?
Yes, Mayor. I think it is set forth in a proposed resolution which is attached to the memorandum.
I see, on the back here. Okay, thank you. Are there further questions from council on this matter? I do see that we have a member of the audience that signed up for this. Mrs. Bernardi, before you sit down, did you sign up on the budget item? Would you like to come forward and speak, please? No, you're fine. We were just coming to that. We had questions from council on it. We have not had a resolution on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome to speak, yes.
Always racing. Yeah, I had a couple of concerns. I think, first, thank you for all the work you did. You spent hours and hours and really debated the issues thoroughly as you always do, all of you. And I think we're lucky to have people who are so dedicated, so I thank you for that. Now, there are a few things I have concerns about. In the study session of May 4th, we heard that when an engineering position in the building department was eliminated, a consulting fee of up to $60,000 was approved to cover the potential need which might arise as a result of the loss of that position. The point was made that the portion of the $60,000 that would be used in the coming year is unknown at this time. In other words, they can use up to $60,000. If we do use all of the $60,000, and there's nothing saying that we can't, the position would not have had to have been eliminated in the first place. There would have been two very good, real advantages in not eliminating that position. First, we would be providing one more real job in Troy in a world where jobs are extremely precious. And second, the person filling the position would be present every day helping with the day-to-day workload rather than just doing a few hours' work here and there at a very high pay rate. Additionally, who will be responsible for checking on how much of the $60,000 actually does get used? It is my guess that in six to 12 months, it will be forgotten and never brought to mind. My fear is that there are consulting fees like this all over this budget because they have been historically in the past. In much of our business, we have a history of relying heavily on budgets, on consultation fees. And we don't have anything in place that clearly states how these consulting fees are monitored and managed. And many times, they end up not even, the suggestions that are made are not even utilized. And I do think it's a duplication of service in that we have a very competent staff that should be able, and I truly believe they are able, if they're given the opportunity to use their full potential, that they themselves are able to come up with much of the work that is allocated to consultants or to studies. And that brings me to my second concern, and that is our historically heavy reliance on studies that we hire companies and firms to do for us. In fact, I brought an article from the Troy Times, May 7th. And it says, "Acting City Manager John Zerlock Suggested Hiring a Company", again, "Hiring a company to do an accurate statistical sampling of residents' priorities", and so on. I feel that we don't, we really need to stop this habit of hiring, 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 and then doing more hiring for studies and for consultations. I feel that the residents here in Troy are very eager and willing to give their opinions on a vast array of subjects and that all of that can be done in-house and that we shouldn't have to rely on hiring companies to do it for us. And I'd like to just alliterate quickly and briefly some of the reasons why I'm saying what I'm saying, especially in this year. What I just said about my concerns have been my concerns about waste, financial waste in our budgets all through the years. But now it's even more important than ever. And here are the reasons. We have taken jobs away from loyal employees. Our refuge fund is in the danger zone. Our reserve funds are dwindling. Capital projects have been placed on hold. We know that there will be less and less money available for fixing our roads. We will be taking in less revenue from all sources. We have even had one council member say that he fears for the survival of our city government itself. Those are my reasons, and I urge you to take it to heart to try to, in future budgets, to eliminate the heavy reliance on consultations and on studies. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that is here on this item that wishes to speak on the budget? No one else signed up for this item. We'll return it then back to the council table. Councilmembers, are there further questions? The resolution this evening, as I said, includes the insertion of the one paragraph before the final, finally resolved. Would someone like to move the resolution? Councilman Eisenbacher?
I will move the resolution as printed on the yellow handout, which includes the addition of one paragraph which I'll read. Be it further resolved that the 2009-2010 budget uses 8.03 of the maximum 8.10 millage rate levy, which was passed by voters in 2008 with the charter amendment adding section 9.16.5 to the city charter.
And the rest of the resolution reads as printed in your printed agenda and as it was listed previously?
Yeah, it's three pages long.
Right. Do we have a second to the motion? Moved by Councilman Eisenbacher, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we approve the adoption of the 2009-2010 annual budget with the insertion of the paragraph as so read and printed in our agenda, yes. Comments, Councilwoman Kerwin?
Just a reminder, I've disclosed in the past in front of my colleagues and in public hearings that I do work part-time for the Boys and Girls Club of Troy. A Boys and Girls Club is a recipient of some funds in here. I receive no funds myself for salary, but I will refrain from voting on any contract that comes as a result of today's passage.
Further comments? The vote then is, I'm sorry.
Wasn't quick enough.
Yes, Councilman Eisenbacher, and then Mayor Protam Howellak.
I just want to thank the staff for coming to the challenge that we put forth to hold the line on our millage and to not rely on our reserve funds this year. It was not the easiest task we could have assigned you and you came through and you did it. I also want to publicly thank the AFSCME Union for coming forward while we were in the budget process and stating that they would carry forward their current contract with no raise during the next year. I think that that action was very cognizant of our current fiscal situation in the city with decreasing property values. I'm glad that we were, as a group, able to work together to put forth a budget that is basically living within our means. We're matching our expenditures with our revenue. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Howellak, did you respond?
Thank you. I will move to amend this resolution by striking the paragraph that reads, "Be it further resolved that the 2009-2010 budget uses 8.03 of the maximum 8.10 millage rate levy, which was passed by the voters in 2008 with the charter amendment adding section 9.16.5 to the city charter."
Do we have a second?
I'll support for discussion. I'm curious.
Moved by Councilman Howellak, seconded by Councilman Eisenbacher, that we amend by striking the paragraph that was inserted. And Councilman Eisenbacher, you indicated you supported for discussion.
Yes.
Do you have a question with regard to the matter?
Yeah, I interpret this as meaning that we're clarifying what millage rates would be in use for that section of the charter. I'm curious where the concern would be.
You're curious as to Mayor Protam Howellak's concern?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Howellak?
Mayor, if, well, let me queer in management because perhaps I mistaken here. But it's my understanding that the, it is my understanding that refuse mill levy is exempt from limitation. Is that correct?
Mr. Lamorato?
I'm mayor and city council. The refuse millage rate is covered under state law and that is not part of the charter. Charter amendment speaks mainly to the operating and capital millage.
And so my concern is that if it's a city attorney's opinion that the general operating and general capital fund mill levy is frozen at the level that was present at the November 2008 election, regardless of how we act here, then this paragraph is unneeded. I'm concerned, I have a different opinion with the city attorney, but I think nevertheless, I don't think that this paragraph is appropriate in this budget resolution. I think that if there's a concern about the interpretation of the charter amendment, as we've mentioned in the past, more than likely it'll be processed through the court system. I think that if it's a city attorney's opinion, then this language really won't have any impact one way or another.
This paragraph came up as a result of the discussion we had at the last budget session. And so Mrs. Blum, would you like to clarify?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would just indicate that we do feel that it is important to have this resolution in here because this is really a declaration of the city council as to what the charter amendment means. And it may avoid litigation in the future. I can't guarantee that, of course, but we do feel that it would help for the future.
And Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protam Howellak?
I think that's an enormously dangerous precedent because the city council didn't place that item on the ballot. It was petitioned, be placed on the ballot, voted by a fairly significant majority. And I don't think it's the city council's position to interpret what another group petitioned to place on the ballot. And as one who circulated that, I have a differing opinion. I do believe that when a general operating fund and a general capital fund mill levy is reduced, that becomes a new limitation. It is not my intent, as a member of the city council, to ratchet down the limitation this year. I do think there are other ways to go about preserving that and avoiding this confrontation this evening. And that wasn't done, and therefore here we are. And therefore, I would respectfully request that this language be eliminated.
Further discussion?
Mayor?
Councilman Eisenbacher?
Yes, please. Question for the city attorney, if I may. The language in the ballot amendment was, "The council shall not increase the millage rate imposed pursuant to section 9.16 of this charter above a current rate actually imposed, levied, and collected unless the increased rate shall be first approved by a majority of the city electors voting on the question." I interpret this statement where it says, "Be it further resolved that the 2009-2010 budget uses 8.03 of the maximum 10 millage rate levy, which was passed by the voters." The amendment didn't talk to a maximum or a portion of the maximum. It talks to the rate that's imposed. I would interpret this addition as being, we're levying 8.03. We were levying 8.10. Is that different from how you're interpreting it?
Mrs. Blum?
Mayor, the charter, as we have previously discussed when the charter language was actually put on the ballot proposal, there are some terms that are used interchangeably that are a little, the definitions are inconsistent. So there is some ambiguity there. But in looking at what is stated- But in looking at what is stated, it is the amount that is imposed, levied, and collected. It is, again, we think that our interpretation, city administration's interpretation, is that that applies to the operating and the capital only because the other expenditures are not part of section 9.16. So because it's a qualification of section 9.16, then it is limited to the operations and the capital, and it does not include the refuse. And as of 2008, the information that went out to the voters, our millage rate at that point in time was 8.10 mils. So that is the threshold amount. That is the maximum amount, and it cannot exceed that amount unless and until there is a vote of the people.
So, if I may follow up. So if the council wanted to levy 8.10 mils next year, it would not require a vote?
If in the operating and the capital. Yes, that is correct.
But this year's budget only uses 8.03.
Correct, and that is something as well. Council can certainly go much lower. It is the council that determines what that amount is going to be, and certainly the council that is here next year, going through the same process, can set whatever rate they deem appropriate.
Up to 8.10.
Right, up to 8.10.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Mayor Protam Howarak?
I guess what I'm looking for is, you know, we may ultimately, as a council unanimously agree to this language, but I don't think that time is pressing now. I would rather adopt the budget that all six of us here tonight can agree on and get some support from the city attorney's office, and we can always adopt this resolution later, even prior to the beginning of the budget year. But my concern is, I'd like to know, because we really haven't even had much discussion about this since the election either, and that's really where I think that I could live with if we would at least postpone this paragraph's adoption tonight.
Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, I would encourage you to, if you're going to insert this language, I would encourage that now be the time that that occurs because now you have the budget before you. You are setting the millage rate. That is part of your action item, and this is the first opportunity that we have, that you as a council has had to take action on that. So I would encourage you to do that. Certainly, if you aren't, you know, going to do that tonight, certainly we could take this up at a later time. However, we thought that this was a wonderful opportunity. It was your first opportunity, and we felt that that was the best way to minimize the discussion about this and to, again, implement what council's intent is and what city administration's understanding is.
Further discussion? Councilwoman Kerwin?
Just a reminder, this language, the request for the inclusion of this came from those of us who attended the last session, that it wasn't really a request from council. It didn't come from administration as something that they wanted. But after it came up and we saw that, it was a suggestion, and it was strongly suggested by our attorney, and I will be supporting it.
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Just more specific, the issue came up in our first council session, and this language came to us after our second session. We didn't have this language, if I recall, in front of us at the second session. Is that correct? Okay. So this was not in front of us in this format when we went around the table and asked for any more questions. I just want to be... Make sure I clarify that.
And Mayor, if I may just respond to that. It is in response to Councilwoman Melchmann's inquiries, which did occur at the second study session. So, yes, it is correct that this is after the fact and in response to her inquiries.
Further discussion?
Mayor.
Mayor Protam Howarak?
I think the thing to remember here is this isn't just a routine resolution. This resolution has a monumental impact on the operations of this city and the interpretation of a citizen-led petition drive that was approved by approximately 80% of the electorate of the city of Troy in the November 2008 election. We cannot underestimate its impact on future city governance. For example, just to use round numbers, if you had a city budget that was adopted at eight mils, and if the city council in the subsequent year approached the electorate to increase the limitation to nine mils, and the electorate did, but not change, you know, pursuant to the language that was adopted last year, and then it was subsequently reduced back to eight, eight is not not the limit anymore, it's nine. The language that I believe is in the charter says that it would be reduced to eight. City attorney would say nine. And now here we are this evening, being asked to interpret as a nonjudicial body what the language is. I think that the city attorney has opined, and that is officially the position that the city is going to take unless she or her successors are overruled by the courts. And I think that this language is completely unnecessary.
My interpretation that the resolution passed by, the ballot language passed by the citizens, was to keep the rate at what we had at the present time because they felt that that was sufficient, and that any increase they wanted to have a vote on. It was not their intent to have us levy a lesser rate. Budget circumstances through the economy and less monies coming in mean that we need to protect the ability to levy a rate that is appropriate for the needs of the community. And so I think that even if we were to ask the voters again for their interpretation of the vote, they would say that they want to make sure there's enough money to cover the needs that, of the things that we cover with our budget, and that's what this does. In fact, our whole budget that we approved tonight sets the pattern for what we're going to do in the next year in service to the community. And we're going to have less coming in with revenue sharing, with all kinds of things. Mrs. Erlich, do you wish to add anything on this, or Mr. Lamarrato?
I think it's been... I'll go first, John, if you don't mind. I think it's been articulated accurately by both sides. As someone of a latecomber, the way I see it is just numerically, that you have a refuse fund with a state authorized, I think it's a cap of, what, three mils, Dan? And we're under three mils. There was a shortage, and when you compare the revenues to the expenditures, but rather than have your own ability to raise the refuse rate to meet our expenditures, the governing body chose to reduce the maximum allowable millage rate of 8.1 mils and take a portion of that to the refuse rate. And what's at issue now is that is the 8.1 mils a maximum operating rate year after year? Or if you take a portion of that and give it to, allocate it to another fund, you automatically reduce your ability to increase back up to the maximum rate. That, I think, is what is at issue. And the language that's in front of you just clarifies it numerically that, yes, the 8.10 is the maximum rate that was adopted by the voters that cannot be exceeded without a vote of the people. The other philosophy is that if you take a portion of that maximum rate and allocate it to a different fund, then you have the new threshold that you got to vote upon to bring it back up to a higher level. It's up to you.
Further discussion? Any other questions on the matter? What is on the table at this point is the amendment that was moved by Councilman Howarak and seconded by Councilman Isabacher for discussion, and that was to amend to strike the added paragraph. And then the resolution preceding that was the resolution with that inserted.
Mayor?
Mayor Protam Howarak?
I think Mr. Zurlag articulated the point very well. My only disagreement is, I strongly do not believe that it is the city council that makes the decision as to what the charter means. City council can interpret it, but the charter says what the charter says, and if there are any disagreements on the charter, then the courts are where it's adjudicated. And I think it's really bad precedent to have the city council pose as a judicial body what it is not and never will be.
Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew, on the amendment?
Mayor Shilling?
No.
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Yes.
Isabacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
No.
Motion fails. The motion before us, that is the main motion, discussion of the motion. The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Yes.
Isabacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarak?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes. That concludes the public hearings that are on for this evening, and so going through the agenda, the next item, we come to public comment limited to items that are not on the agenda. And let me look to see who has signed up under that matter. We have Marv Reinhardt. Mr. Reinhardt, did you wish to speak?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You guys want to pass that?
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, then we will go to our regular business, and I have scrolled down to see if anyone signed up on a regular business item because we take those out of order if there is someone here on that. But I see that there are none, so we will proceed in the order that is here, and that is appointments to boards and committees. And our first one is the appointment for the personnel board, and I'll call on Mayor Protam Howarak. Would you like to move the resolution?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I will certainly move forward the nomination as printed on the agenda. Support.
Moved by Councilman Howarak, seconded by Councilman Isabacher, that the city council hereby appoints F. Jack Witt III to the personnel board for a term expiring 4/30/2012. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Isabacher?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next item is nominations for appointments to boards and committees, and I'll call on Mayor Protam Howarak and then any other council members that have names to bring forward. Councilman Howarak?
Mayor, I believe we have two. I know that Leslie Witt for the Historic District Study Committee and the Historical Society forwarded, freshen my memory, for the Historic District Commission. Was that Uriel Rounds, I think? Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's a reappointment.
Right.
Was there another one, or just?
That's all we have right now.
Okay.
I think we're waiting on Mr. Hudson.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protam Howarak, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we forward the following names for nominations to the Historic District Commission, the reappointment of Uriel Rounds to the term expiring 5/15/2012, and Leslie Witt to the Historic District Study Committee. Did I get this right? The Ed Hart Committee.
Mayor.
Yes. Mayor Protam Howarak?
Just one point of clarification. I think Uriel Rounds is actually a new appointment. She's on the historical commission. She'll also be on the Historic District Commission.
Thank you. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Yes.
Isabacher?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next is a bid waiver for workman's compensation insurance renewal for fiscal year 2009-2010. Do we have a resolution? This is waiving a formal bidding procedure.
Mayor.
Councilman Isabacher?
Whereas the Michigan... I'll move the resolution. Whereas the Michigan Municipal League has provided workers' compensation insurance for the city of Troy, and the premium charged has been equitable based on the city's experience, and whereas it is desirable to continue the program through the Michigan Municipal League due to the positive experience of participating in the Michigan Municipal League program, therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby waives the formal bidding procedures and hereby approves the net estimated premium cost of $436,057 for workers' compensation insurance through Michigan Municipal League for the 2009-2010 fiscal year with a resulting final estimated cost to the city of $344,845 after applying a dividend distribution check in the amount of $91,212.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Isabacher, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilman Isabacher?
Typically, I'm concerned about items where we don't bid them out, but this one, we've checked into it in the past. It may be time next year to double-check it because I think we've done three bids without checking, but I'm confident enough to let it go another year.
Further questions or discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilman Howarak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Yes.
Isabacher?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Next is a bid waiver for the citywide dedicated internet service. Do we have a resolution?
I'll move it as printed this time.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Sir.
Moved by Councilman Isabacher, seconded by Councilman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed. Questions? I have one. Since, I know they provide a good service to us, AT&amp;T, and they have their new service up and running, the ATT U-verse, but what they have not provided in the ATT U-verse is the local channel, PEG channels. There was a discussion, meeting that staff had with them with regard to that, and when we originally did our franchise agreement many, many years ago, what, 30 years ago at least? No, 20. That was one of the things they had to provide, and those entities did. Now, when the new cable legislation came forward, AT&amp;T was allowed to provide service, but they didn't have to provide that as part of their agreement, the PEG channels. And I am hoping that we can still shake that loose with them because I've had citizens say to me, well, I could get it if I had WOW or Comcast, why can't I get it, you know, with AT&amp;T? And here, AT&amp;T wants to provide citywide dedicated internet service, okay, which is a lucrative contract, but they don't want to provide that with the PEG channel. So I'm bringing it up at this point. Do we have any information with regard to that? Did they?
Your honor, it's an excellent question. I apologize, I don't have an answer. Perhaps someone on staff does, and if you don't, we'll have one.
I don't know if Mr. Murphy was in on the meeting, or if... Wait, Gert was? Were you in on that? Yes.
I was, mayor and council. The only...
I know that also Mrs. Stewart was in it, yes.
I do know when I talked to them about this contract...
Can't hear... Is the mic on there?
I do know that when I talked to them about this contract... Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, behind you. Just plugged it in.
When I talked to them about the internet contract, they did ask me about that, if we were interested in signing up with them for the PEG channel or paying for additional lines, T1 lines... lines, T1 lines. And then I talked to Cindy about it. And she had some discussions with them also.
But I don't understand why we should have to pay more when we didn't have to pay more with the other companies. That's my point. I think the legislation needs to be revisited.
That's what I talked to them too, when I met with her last week. And they have stated that it would cost us approximately $600 a month. Plus, we'd have to get an encoder for $5,000, or that could be free, depending the length of our contract with them.
And I'm sure this is happening with other cities that felt that this should have been covered in the legislation. Do we have any hope of having that legislation being revisited? Do we know? Mrs. Bloom?
Mayor, I would just indicate that there are several communities that are watching this very closely. A lot of other communities are in this very same situation. There is no guarantee that we will get the PEG channels. We are working towards it, but it is probably going to cost us under the current legislation, and a change will be required.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman Isabelle?
Company is the same, but the issues are completely different, aren't they? Because this is a business class T1 line that we're talking about for our operations.
That's right.
The other one is a residential class of --
Right.
Asymmetric.
I just thought I'd bring it up, since we were on the subject of what AT&amp;T is providing. And I do want the citizenry to know what the situation is, of why that's not being provided by AT&amp;T. It's not through our fault, because we have the ability and are providing it through the other cable franchise. And so I guess maybe those of us that feel strongly about need to lobby our state legislature some more to have an amendment to the cable legislation.
It's also my understanding that the cable companies use their coaxial cables, but AT&amp;T is using their telephone lines for this, or satellite?
Yes.
So it's a different, it's a completely different access?
I believe it's a T1 line that they use.
For the U-verse?
Yes.
Okay.
For the PEG channel.
So, okay, so they're using telephone lines for the cable, basically, instead of a cable line, and the laws are set up for cable and for access to the cable lines, where telephone lines is much older legislation. Okay.
Is there any other questions with regard to the citywide dedicated internet service? This contract. Councilwoman Kerwin?
Just a comment, piggyback on both of yours. I think it's wonderful, I think that our current internet service through the city is very, very good. And I think that it does aid our transparency and accountability, because members of the community, the same way as we do, access the City Council agenda and all the background material online. I do think it's unfortunate, however, that in that same spirit of transparency and accountability, that some residents in our community, because of AT&amp;T, are unable to watch on cable and learn more about what is happening right here. It does bring in some of the people who are sitting in the room tonight, to sit at home and see what's going on, and then come on in. So I echo both of those concerns. I am glad to see MML advocate on our behalf with our legislature.
Councilman Isabelle?
Yeah, Mary's, or Councilwoman Kerwin's point reminded me of something. We have our internet broadcasting of our council meetings. All these people that would have AT&amp;T U-verse have enough bandwidth where they could receive a net broadcast. During the hours that we don't have council meeting, the net broadcast is silent. Is it possible to link our internet broadcast to our cable channel? Because that would get around the concern, and then everyone would have access anywhere in the world to the same channel.
Well, that is a suggestion. But the problem is that usually it's on a screen this size, whereas your television usually is a little bit bigger, and in some cases, very much bigger. And so it's a different experience watching it on the internet, as opposed to watching it, you know, on television. It's a completely different experience.
Mine are tied together.
I know.
But, yeah.
I understand what you're saying. Okay, you ready for the vote on this one? Okay, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shalane?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Yes.
Isabelle?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Motion passes. E5 is amendment to Chapter 60, fees and bonds required, Christmas tree sidewalk sales and temporary merchant business fees.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby adopts an ordinance amendment to Chapter 60, fees and bonds required of the Troy City Code, Section 60.04, fee schedule, Christmas tree sidewalk sales and temporary merchant businesses, Chapter 61, as prepared by city administration, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Since we're on this, and they're mentioning that this was temporary, which was formerly the transient licensed businesses, I need to ask a question, because we just had one that's set up in a parking lot that didn't get a license. And I want to know what happened with that particular business, and if that is going to happen again, or whether we're alleviating that. So since we're on this item, I figured that's the time to ask it. I think Mr. Steinbeck was out here, but then he went back in, is that right? Mr. Murphy, do you have the answer?
I don't have the answer for you, and I was kind of stalling to see if Mr. Steinbeck was in the back of the room.
Okay.
But Mayor, members of council, I'll be glad to look into the matter for you.
Pardon? I'm having trouble hearing over there.
I'll be glad to look into it for -- Did I hear that? No, I'll be glad to look into it for you and report back.
Okay, thank you. Because the whole idea was that if they wanted to do this, they have to do the, you know, get the license.
And bear with me just a moment.
That's right.
I hear the question, we're discussing something.
The question was, since we're on this item, and this temporary merchant business fees, which used to be transient business. We had someone try to set up a business in the parking lot that didn't get a license to do it?
We did, we did receive --
And what happened with that business, and what will be the procedure forthcoming?
The one business that we did receive information on, we did locate the headquarters of that business, and did send them notice along with copy of the ordinance, as well as the application, and instructed them that they should not locate a business in Troy without the first obtaining the transient merchant, or excuse me, the temporary business license. And that, we did not issue any, we did inform them that what they did was a violation. We did not issue any tickets on it.
Okay. Does anyone else have any difficulties with this particular amendment, Chapter 60?
Change in the fees.
This, I know, this is just change in the fees. Okay, do we have a resolution? There's, I don't see any names written down here. Councilman Isabelle?
Well, Councilwoman Kerwin moved it, right?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
I'll second. If no one else did.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilman Isabelle. Is that what you have, Mrs. Bartholomew? Okay, further discussion? Thank you. The vote then, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Shalane?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Yes.
Isabelle?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
And E6 is amendment to Chapter 20 of the Troy City Code, water and sewer rates. Do we have a resolution?
Mayor?
Councilman Isabelle?
I hate raising utility rates, but this pays for the services delivered.
Passing it on, or raising it thus?
I would like to get, I just lost my spot.
Okay, move the resolution, then.
Yep, move the resolution. Resolve that the Troy City Council hereby approves an amendment to Chapter 20 of the Troy City Code, water and sewer rates, a copy of which shall be applied to the original minutes of this meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Isabelle, seconded by Councilwoman Brumfield, that we approve the resolution. Councilman Isabelle, you say you had a question?
Yep. I'd like for our staff to just quickly overview what we're doing, just for publicity to the audience.
In terms of capital improvements?
Explanation of why the rates are changing.
What the rates are, what the effect is, the memo stuff.
Mayor and City Council, we have for you a rate increase of approximately 5% for the water and sewer rates. We discussed these items during our budget study session. These rates will provide operating and maintenance costs for the system, as well as provide funds for improvements to the system. Our proposed rate is supposed at $45.50 per thousand cubic feet, which is a $2.16 increase per thousand cubic feet. The average bill for a family of four will increase approximately $8.42 per quarter.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Mayor, I just want to make sure that there is an amendment on the table, so I want to make sure that your motion refers to the resolution as amended.
Yes.
E6 on the table, it's up in the corner. Here, this one.
Yes, and including the typographical correction in our, in our chapter.
Okay. Further discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Yes.
Isabelle?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Mayor Shalane?
Yes. Motion passes. E7 is a request for approval of purchase agreement and acceptance of permanent public utility easement and regrading and temporary construction permit, Rochester Road Improvements, Torpey to Barclay. And Wallace Road Improvements, Bristol to Worthington.
I will move the resolution as presented.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Isabelle, seconded by Mayor Protam Howarak, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? Councilman Isabelle, you had some questions, and those were provided to you. Did you have anything else on that?
Yeah, I mean, we've been going through a lot of these over the last meeting, because this is a big project to widen Rochester. So I just wanted to have the bird's view of the project, and look at all those properties. And I appreciate staff for getting us that copy of the print.
And when we widen the southern portion, the folks at the area that is now going to be provided for said, you know, how soon is that going to happen? And of course, after the monies were accumulated for the project, I think it'll help with some of the congestion in that area, hopefully.
Long-term congestion?
Yes, I know.
Not short-term.
Of course, our major road. And Mrs. Bloom, you wanted to?
Mayor, yes, I just wanted to indicate that in addition to items E7 and E8, there will be just two additional items to come before you on this project. So just know that they will be coming soon, but there are only two that are remaining.
So you can get rid of those big stacks that are in your office over every table? Okay, the vote on E7, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Isabelle?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shalane?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Yes.
Motion passes. E8 is the request for authorization to make the unconditional offer to purchase easement for Rochester Road Improvements, and the request for authorization to institute court action.
Mayor?
Councilman Isabelle? Councilman Mayor Protam Howarak, you want to have them split?
I was going to move E8A.
Okay.
Support.
Not B?
Not B.
Moved by Councilman Howarak, seconded by Councilman Isabelle, that we approve E8A. And before we have a discussion, Mrs. Bloom, what's the difficulty with not doing A and B?
Mayor, you certainly can move it as A, that certainly is appropriate, and you can vote on them separately, so it would be fine to take a vote on A.
But you need A and B, don't you?
Well, again, once A is passed, we certainly would like a resolution on B as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Passed or failed.
EA. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Fleming?
Yes.
Howarak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shalane?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Yes.
Isabelle?
Yes.
Motion passes. E8B is in, and before us, Councilwoman Fleming?
Governor, I'll move E8B authorization to institute court action as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed for E8B, which is authorization to institute court action if necessary. Discussion? The vote, Mr. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Howarak?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shalane?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brumfield?
Yes.
Isabelle?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. And E9 is updated city manager search, and I think, Mrs. Bloom, are you doing introductions?
Well, I certainly am happy to do that. Some of you may have had the opportunity today to meet Andrea Sims, who is with us today from Waters Consultant Group, and I will turn it over to her, unless you have any questions with me.
Very nice to meet you. Welcome to Troy.
It's nice to meet everyone in person versus telephone. I've met a lot of folks today, and we'll be meeting with the rest of everyone tomorrow. So it's wonderful to be here. We're happy to be doing this very important search. We have some key dates in here for your approval, but just to clarify, today and tomorrow, we're talking to each member, the mayor, the council members, department heads, having two employee meetings, and the town hall meeting to get input into what's desired for the next city manager. With the advertising that has taken place thus far, we have, we're pleased with the candidates that have put forth their candidacy already, and the inquiries that we received. Once I finish the discussions over the next couple of days, we'll be completing the brochure, have it for your review, and we'll mail it out electronically and, you know, snail mail, so that we'll cover the broadest national audience possible. We have a very aggressive schedule, and want to make sure that the dates that were in the timeline or are confirmed, and those are listed in the agenda. I'll be back in June on the 22nd in a closed session to discuss the search to date, and we will discuss and get concurrent, concurrence on which candidates will be the finalists. We will then move forward very quickly with the confirmation of those candidates, and move forward so that we will have meetings in July to agree on the process as far as the specific questions, then have the succinct meetings, the employee department head and citizen meetings, and then the public meetings for the interviews, so that we can come to resolution by the end of the month of July.
And we appreciate you being able to meet the rather tight schedule that was already agreed upon by council with the timeline. We had some personal, family commitment timed things and to adjust to. So I know it's not too tight, though, with the schedule. Still allowing time to get the information in.
Right, we'll have, we'll have the chance to do a quality search, and to be honest, for candidates, it's better to have a tighter timetable than a later one, because you can lose candidates from other, you know, to other searches that are more aggressive. So we'll just be busy this summer. I am nearby, you know, the firm is based in Dallas, I'm in Cleveland, so we're neighboring states, so I can get here this time of year without a problem.
Yes, that's right. The council, do you have questions for Mrs. Sims? Is it Ms. or Mrs.?
Mrs.
Do you have questions at this point? No, I think you have questions for those of us that have not met with you individually. And then you're going to be having the town hall meeting tomorrow from five to seven at the Troy Community Center so that citizens that wish to have input can do that or they can also, there's a link on our city website, if someone can't come to the meeting but wants to send something in, in writing, they can do that.
And we've already received some comments in writing from a couple of employees and a couple of citizens.
Right.
We're very pleased with the publicity and the interest in this, you know, very important search.
Yes, when, when the school district was doing a search for the superintendent, they also availed themselves of getting information from the public. It's always a good thing to do. We know that, you know, it's a busy time for everyone, so sometimes you don't get as many as you'd like and so it doesn't mean that they are disinterested. Sometimes it's just they don't have the time, you know, to come in. Yes, and did you say you're from the business community that you're?
Oh, we are also, we have a few candidates from the business community already because we advertise in traditional public sector searches, but we also advertise with the local crane's business and we've got.
But did you get input, are you going to be getting input from the local businesses on the profile of the?
No, we do not have a venue for that. They would have to, they can use the same venue, the website.
Yes, and I'm sure that the chamber, you know, that we may have some input that they want to have also, so.
Sure.
We'll see what we get. Okay, well, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to seeing you tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is our consent agenda.
Mayor?
I'm sorry.
We do have this most resolution.
I'm sorry. We didn't vote on it. I'm jumping ahead, thank you. Do we have a resolution? Councilwoman Broomfield, would you like to move that?
I would move the resolution. Whereas City Council received proposals from executive search firms to search for the Troy City Manager and whereas at the April 16th, 2009, City Council approved key activities and date schedule, requesting key dates that the council will need to call special city council meetings as part of the city manager executive search process, which has been subsequently revised. Therefore, be it resolved, the Troy City Council hereby schedules special city council meetings and closed city council meetings as outlined below. Monday, June 22nd, 2009, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the city in the council boardroom of Troy City Hall, 500 West Big Beaver, Troy, Michigan, 48084, for the purpose of meeting in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268F and MCL 15.268H, MCL 15.243E and K, to review material and deliberate and/or select finalists to be scheduled for interviews. Monday, July 6th, 2009, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the council boardroom of Troy City Hall, 500 West Big Beaver, Troy, Michigan, 48084, for the purpose of meeting in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268F and MCL 15.268H, MCL 15.243E and K, to review material and deliberate and finalize interview questions and protocol. Tuesday, July 7th, 2009, from 5:30 p.m. until 7:30 p.m. in room 304 of the community center, 3179 Laverne, Troy, Michigan, 48084, for the purpose of conducting a town hall forum where council, public, employees, and news media can meet and greet the finalists. Wednesday, July 8th, 2009, at 9:00 a.m. in the council boardroom of Troy City Hall, 500 West Big Beaver, Troy, Michigan, 48084, for the purpose of conducting public interviews. Each interview will last approximately one hour and 15 minutes. Thursday, July 9th, 2009, at 7:00 p.m. in the council room, council boardroom of Troy City Council, 500 West Big Beaver, Troy, Michigan, 48084, for the purpose of deliberating and selecting a new city manager contingent upon completion of reference and background checks, negotiation of contract, and a starting date.
Do we have a second? Moved by Councilwoman Broomfield, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Yes.
Mayor Shawlon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Broomfield?
Yes.
Iceman?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Howardak?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we can go to the consent agenda. Do, does council have any items they wish exempted?
Mayor?
Councilwoman, Mayor Portem Howardak?
F two.
F two?
Mayor, F six.
Is it changed? F two, F six. Any others? Okay, do we have a resolution?
Madam Mayor?
With those two exceptions, Councilwoman Kerwin?
Resolve that items as presented on the consent agenda are hereby approved with the exceptions of F two and F six, which shall be considered after consent agenda F items as printed.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman Broomfield, that we approve all consent agenda items except F two and F six that'll be considered after this motion. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Shawlon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Broomfield?
Yes.
Iceman?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howardak?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passes. F two, Mayor Portem Howardak?
Mayor?
Yes.
With the April 16th meeting, I just have two concerns. I should say not with the meeting, but with the minutes. One is that there's a reference in the resolution, E nine, that we just passed that said that certain dates were approved. There's no reference to it in the minutes and I think, you know, the things should flow, so if we could hold off on that and have mentioned that we had a consensus and these dates were set, et cetera, et cetera. My other concern with the minutes is, actually, there are two other ones. Number two is there was actually a second recess. And number three is, Mayor, you had to leave because you were ill after the second recess. And I think that those three things need to be in the minutes.
In other words, you thought the minutes were too brief, they didn't encapsulate all that happened?
Um, yes.
For the 16th.
Especially when there's a reference to these, this meeting in another resolution. So if it would be okay, I'll make a resolution to approve the other meeting's minutes and then we can take care of the April 16th at the next week's meeting.
Okay.
So I'll resolve that the Troy City Council hereby approves the minutes of the?
Twenty?
Seven thirty p.m. regular city council meeting, which one's amended? Of April 20th and April 27th and May 4th.
As amended?
As amended.
As corrected, that's how.
Or corrected, excuse me. Good point.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman, Mayor Portem Howardak, seconded by Councilwoman Broomfield, that we approve the minutes for April 20th as corrected. Discussion? The vote, Mr. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Broomfield?
Yes.
Iceman?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howardak?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Mayor Shawlon?
Yes. Motion passes. F six, Councilman Iceman?
Yes.
The tri, tri-funds?
Yes, I'm very glad that we're going to be able to cover a large portion of the city with the mild road repairs. Do have an interest that we don't cause excessive congestion by, in our timing of the repairs.
And I think some things were in your answers here about the timing of those.
Yep. Say here. We'll assure that traffic will, will be at its most functional rate when making these repairs. Okay, so you're not going to tear up all the roads at one time and then wait? Okay, thank you. I'll move the resolution then as printed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
For F six? Moved by Councilman Iceman, seconded by Councilwoman Fleming, that we approve item F six. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Iceman?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howardak?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Mayor Shawlon?
Yes.
Councilwoman Broomfield?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next we come to memorandums, council referrals, council comments. Councilwoman Kerwin?
If anybody had a chance yet to read the review, it's the MML magazine that came in the mail just recently. It seems that lately, MML has been taking a different aspect of the prosperity issues in discussing them. And just coincidentally, this time it was diversity as an asset and positioning ourselves for 21st century communities. I just want to quote one thing that they included, which was, "Those communities that promote, seek, welcome, and integrate people of all religions, ethnicities, national origins, and races will be seen as the right kind of place for this key demographic as well as for global businesses." And coincidentally, as I received this, this past week, I was able to attend the Troy Interfaith Group Fifth Annual National Day of Prayer, Lift Every Voice, which includes a number of different ways to pray from our community, all gathered together on one single night. I brought these back for fellow council members. It was a good example of the diversity that we have in our community and a great, great event.
I'd like to, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilwoman Broomfield.
No, no, you two want to comment on that?
No, it wasn't on this. It was on another item.
I was going to add too, that in the magazine that Councilwoman Kerwin referenced, our own council person, Robin Belchemini, had a very nice article. So it's nice when we get out and involved in other community or other organizations and she did a good job.
Troy was in the positive spotlight again today. Councilwoman Kerwin, Councilman Iceman, and I were able to, I know some have work schedules, so I can't always come to everything, but you all were invited and Mr. Zerlag and Mr. Murphy and Mrs. Bloom were at CPI today, Compact Power, which is doing the lithium battery for the Volt, and was covered on Channel Seven and on Channel Two that I saw tonight. And the governor and also the Secretary of Labor were there and had some very positive things to say about Troy and were invited back. I suggested to Secretary of Labor that perhaps, and she's from California originally, that she come back and perhaps go to Automation Alley to see how businesses are working together. And this is whole, several county areas, not just open county, but also budding counties too, because they've increased over the years. And the talk was about using the wonderful people that are in the area that are so talented and that are being retrained to do jobs, maybe they've lost their present job, that are going on to another job, and the entrepreneurial effect of that on the communities. And so it was all a very positive thing. And so it was nice to be there and to hear people saying some positive things about, about Troy. We're pleased that businesses, no matter what size, we want them to profit, to do well, and to continue to serve people. So it was a nice experience for all of us today. Friday is Police Memorial Day, which is always a very nice event that we hold here at, actually not here at City Hall, but in front of the Police Administration Building. And it's always a wonderful opportunity to recognize the service of all of our police officers as well as those three officers who lost their lives in the line of duty. And it's set aside each year, I noticed that several other communities, even some had it today, so it must be this whole week that they do it. But it is, we hope that we have good weather for that. It's always nice to be outside. Any other council comments on items? If not, then we're in adjournment at 8:51.